It is now eight o'clock and I call to order the McGuffey Regular School Board Meeting for January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-five. I would like everybody, if you don't mind, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And before we do the pledge, I ask everybody to please take a moment. Um, moment of silence for everything that's going out in California, the horrific fires. For any McGuffey alum that has passed away since we last met. Um, take the ten seconds, fifteen, twenty seconds, whatever you need to do. Um, if you need to pray, if you need to do anything, I ask that you do it now.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America and through the Republic of Louisiana, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
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 Alright, so we already did that, correct?
Yep.
Alright. At this time, I would take public comment on agenda items. I would ask that you step to the podium, um, with your name and the township that you reside. Chief.
Sorry, Mr. President, I had a late sign up. Apologize for that. Uh, call Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township, I hope everybody had wonderful holidays. Um, I only have two topics tonight. I'd like to start with the school schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six. And I'd like to ask you all, I want you all to ask yourselves, why do we have snow days built into the schedule that are in the middle of winter? You're probably not going to use them in the middle of winter as we had four FID days prior to the scheduled snow makeup day that we couldn't utilize because it was brutally cold. Now, I know nobody has a magic ball about winter, but it is Pennsylvania. And I see our two scheduled days for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year makeup days are, um, January nineteenth and February sixteenth. Well, as far as I know, that's still winter in Pennsylvania, and I just don't understand the logic in it. Um, I was gonna ask why the voicemail said FID days? And then there was reference to remote learning. And I was gonna ask that you clarify what the difference between the two are. Um, but you kind of touched on that already, Dr. Ober. But what I'd like to know is, the calendar says a hundred and eighty days. And it with the implement, with the implementation in March of twenty-three, with the difference between instructional hours and instructional days, it appears, even though we're showing a hundred and eighty day calendar, that we're actually using the instructional hours versus the days. Otherwise, I don't, someone would have to explain to me how at this point in the year, we've already used six FID remote learning days, um, which would take us out of our hundred and eighty days with makeup days. So, it's just a question I have. I want, I, at some point, I'd like us to commit to either instructional hours or instructional days. So, I think that would help with part of the confusion. And I just want to remind you all also, when we're, we're plant, planning these remote days, that we do still have a portion of our community that has poor Wi-Fi. And on these days, they are struggling. So, I think you should really look at this calendar before you vote on it. And maybe consider moving those days into spring, which to me would make more sense. Okay, last thing. And you all know I talk about it all the time. Coaches. Coaches play such an inter- integral role in our children's lives. So, I'm curious why the administration and board are against parent and student surveys being conducted on all coaches prior to rehire. Why don't parents have a voice and who is coaching their children? After all the complaints you've received after the last few years, you'd think that you would at least take into consideration what these surveys could refill. I know for a fact that parents and students' complaints have been ignored, even when the chain of command has been followed, and some of you know it. It's time that parents' voices matter when it comes to who's coaching their children in these important roles. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Mr. President, Jessica Peel.
Good evening, uh, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough. I just wanted to touch on, I'm sorry, I don't remember the agenda item. Um, it's the Assistant Principal, um, position. I just wanted to, um, hopefully just, uh, ask that you approve Mr. Stoy tonight. Um, he was currently, uh, one of our, uh, specialized teachers here. He's been wonderful to work with. I will be so sad that he will not be working with us anymore should you approve him. Um, but he's going to be wonderful for our district. Um, my son got to work with him while he was in middle school. My son is currently in eighth grade. Um, so he has had the chance to see with Mr. Stoy for a few years now, and he's just wonderful. Again, like I said, miss him, so please, uh, approve him to our new Assistant Principal at high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that includes public comment.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, I want to inform everyone that, um, and make an announcement. We did hold an executive session at five PM today to discuss personnel and litigation. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four reorganization school board meeting as submitted.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four regular school board meeting as submitted.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from December sixth, two thousand and twenty-four to January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, check number eight zero one six one to check number eight zero three two three, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents as submitted.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, check number seven seven eight zero to check number seven seven eight five in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Is that, is that sufficed to be three hundred and twenty-four or four? Alright. That's, I have, uh, a motion to have a second.
Second?
Discussion?
What did, what does the amount specify?
The amount is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four and forty-two cents.
I see it, yes, I see it, okay, thank you.
We had a motion, correct, and a second?
Yes.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of December, two thousand and twenty-four as submitted.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six district calendar as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Just a second so we can have discussion.
Discussion?
I think, um, for this year, because I know how many things relate to having this calendar done at a timely fashion. So I think for this year, we leave it as it is. But I do think maybe give consideration to next year as to why the makeup days are in the winter and why we couldn't put makeup days, um, later in the calendar. That would be my suggestion.
I would like to suggest to at least use the makeup days before using the FIDS. Um, we do have a portion of our district that, I mean, I still don't have great internet. They say February fourth, but we'll see if that actually happens. Um, we do have a lot of the district that still doesn't have good internet. Um, and even if they do, we still have a portion of kids who just don't do well remotely. Um, and I think it would be important to, um, to take that into consideration as well. If, if we are going to have FIDS, let's, let's use up the snow days first, the makeup days first, at least if they're there to be used. Um, and then when we run out of those, then we have the FIDS as options. That would be my suggestion.
Any other discussion?
The same question I had before, those April days we can use as makeup breaks? We would have to prove it later as a board.
Which has happened in the past. They just bring it to us at that time, closer to that time, and say, we need to make up a couple days or whatever it is, and the board would approve it. And to be clear, I want to be clear, um, I would never second guess, as a person who's made a decision and been responsible for making decisions, specifically in, in transportation of school students, um, when it comes to inclement weather, I would never second guess the superintendent's decision. He is making, I believe, the best decision he feels necessary, um, for the safety of our, our district. I would never want to undermine that, and that falls squarely under day-to-day operations, not board governance. Looking at the placement of snow makeup days in the calendar, does come under governance. And that's something I think we could look at for next year. But I, I just want to be very clear, Dr. Ober, I would never undermine your decision in that area.
I didn't know anybody at the table was. But, um, could we go ahead, are the, are the makeup days calculated, I guess is my best question, in the hundred and eighty days? So if we were to say, we couldn't say right now, we need those spring break days to also be makeup days. Because of, but I'm saying to already dedicate them to, to makeup days a day. The math would still everything off, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it would have to be for this calendar, approve it as needed.
And actually, I'll add something, you know, two years ago, the school calendar you approved, and actually all prior to school calendars, we actually had three dates. It was the last two to three winters where like, we need different days.
Right. And look what happened. Right. Right. It's snowed in Florida. Um, okay, that was my only question. If we could just approve it now, but if it has to be as needed, then.
It is something that, you know, again, looking at the future certainly, uh, to consider. I mean, it's definitely a point we can look at.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Dr. Ober, we have tenure status?
We do, uh, for two individuals, uh, I'd like to report the tenure. Permanent professional employee status has been earned by Miss Emily Adams, or maybe somebody newer is Emily Salt. Emily is a first grade teacher for us at Claysville. And also for Brianna Mearshaw, uh, she is a middle school math teacher, uh, as a result of three consecutive years of SAT practice teaching in the McGuffey district. So congratulations to those two.
Congratulations.
I need a motion to approve request from Western Governors University for Andrew Schrempf to student teach from February third to May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five pending receipt of all required clearances. And I apologize if I took a period of video.
So moved, I'm, so moved? Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the request from Carlo University to have Carly Calcheck student teach at McGuffey School District March tenth through May second, two thousand and twenty-five pending receipt of all required clearances.
So moved. Second?
Discussion?
I have a question, because it kind of tied into the whole W and J con, uh, conversation earlier. We, in July of last year, there was the, um, the W and J affiliation agreement. Is that what this is, just with different school districts?
It is.
Because I was gonna ask you.
Yes, that, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you, that was all the clarification I needed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agreement with France Law Firm, or Law Group, excuse me, for McGuffey School District to join the Mass Action lawsuit with the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the Kids of Steel grant of one thousand five hundred dollars per McGuffey School District Policy seven zero two gifts, grants, and donations.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Snowball Dance fundraiser to be held on Friday, January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five in the middle school gym.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the McGuffey Middle School Sarah's Candy fundraiser for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the five hundred dollar donation from the Salvation Army to Teen Action for hygiene items per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy seven zero two gifts, grants, and donations.
So moved. Second? Um.
Discussion?
Uh, it's to why Teen Action needs hygiene items?
Uh, they actually support, so we have a room in the high school that has food items, has hygiene items for high school students to access. Uh, in the past, that church, so Christian Gio is the sponsor of that group.
I guess my, my bigger question is, not so much that hygiene items would be available to students if they needed. Why Teen Action? Why would it not just be donated to the school and the school with governance? Why, why Teen Action?
Teen Action, actually in the past, I think they used to have the Mister Highlander competition where they raised the funds.
Mm-hmm.
No, okay, I'm gonna shake for money, but, so they are the, the group that actually helps with that, so they, go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
So the, these aren't hygiene items that are available for our students per se. They're used for a student club and in endeavor that they. That is the clarification I needed, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the donation of five hundred dollars from McDonald's for the middle school per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy seven zero two gifts, grants, and donations.
Second?
Then, um, discussion?
Yes, um, the, it's just donated to be used as needed by Miss, by Walzki's class. I guess I'm confused on what.
So it's a donation, but it's earmarked?
It's, um, I don't know if it's specifically earmarked. If Miss Walzki has gone after this grant, she's actually gone after it in the past and received five hundred dollars to be used in her classroom.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the twenty-four, twenty-five Innovation Grant in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars to reopen the greenhouse at Joe Walker Elementary.
So moved. Second?
Discussion?
I, why is it not operational? I didn't remember hearing that there was a problem with the greenhouse.
As long as I've been here, it has not been in operation. The, the Joe Walker we're talking about specifically.
Yeah.
But it was the one that we spent, yeah, like ten thousand dollars or something like. And it was never operational?
In their stagnant. That's sad. I didn't know that.
Unfortunately, Joe Walker's greenhouse, and I believe Claysville greenhouse, has been mothballed for about, I don't know, two to three years. But to give you a little bit of background history, we've received ten thousand dollar grants for those greenhouses. It cost us eighty to ninety thousand dollars to install those greenhouses. We actually had, uh, there was a lot of, a lot of internal issues, is the best way I can describe it. Um, and I think it's great that we're reopening them, but there is a cost to maintaining them.
Well, Joe Walker did have fish. And they.
They had tilapia at one time.
Yeah, and then, um, only a few of them survived, and they put them in a tank in the classroom. And then they, only a few of those in the classroom survived, and they ended up in the, in the, uh, in the.
Some did.
Well, they, they ended up in office, up, an officer bought the desk. Three of them did in a tank there. And then the greenhouse just, it's, I know Joe Walker just became a storage shed. So now, I know they're, now they're just going to be used for a greenhouse.
Yeah.
It's not gonna have, like plants and such, am I correct, Governor?
That guy's person, um, I think also.
They're not gonna have any fish anymore. Because that would be not a greenhouse.
In, in, in the past, the greenhouses were part of the curriculum that was here. Um, that still exists, but a lot of that exists currently in our classrooms. So, uh, Mrs. Augustine, um, went out and said, let's, let's do something. We have, we have a resource here that we can utilize, so that's what we're doing.
I'm not questioning the money, I think it's great, and I think if we can get them up and running, even better. I'm just floored that they weren't after the money that was spent on them. And I guess my bigger question is, this is great, four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, but as Mr. Leeser just reminded us all, operating greenhouses costs money. So, what exactly is this gonna do for those two programs? Are we gonna, is, is this going to get them up and running?
This is not for those schools.
This is just for Joe Walker.
They're not for Joe Walker.
So for this, for, for Joe Walker, is this gonna get it up and running, and for how long does this maintain it?
Correct, she's also seeking, um, donations, and she has received several in the form of, I believe it is the plants itself she's had donated, and possibly the soil.
Thank you to her, that's amazing.
I, I think that's great that she's doing that, but how did it fall through? Who was?
It was, it was something that was adopted before my time, I really can't speak.
I know it wasn't being used. Who was overseeing it, we don't know.
I know that they had created.
Our previous administration.
A fifth farm here that was part of the curriculum, and, uh, they were using it. But again, the, the goal now is looking forward to get this off the.
Okay.
One, one of the main reasons why they was inoperable is teachers had to take additional time out of their schedule to maintain them.
Mm-hmm.
And it got to the point where it's too much for certain teachers to be able to do it. Um, this is a very.
Because they were told they couldn't use time during the day.
It, it's a very good idea, and, and I think she's doing an awesome job, but to get somebody to volunteer to oversee is a pretty big job, because a lot of times you'll have pipes freeze, water lines freeze, you have heating problems. It's a very maintenance-heavy issue and.
Well, that's what happened with the fish, they froze.
Yeah. That's what I mean.
To be honest with you, they, they froze.
Lot of problems. I would just ask if we could have Mr., uh, our maintenance, the bike manager, maybe look into what it's actually gonna cost us to.
Maintain them.
Get them up and running and have him.
Mr. McKeegan, maybe?
Yes, Mr. McKeegan, if, if it's feasible or not, I mean, if the water line froze and different things, it's, they're underground. It, it, it could be a costly project. I mean, I'm a hundred percent in agreement to get them up and running. I think that it was awesome for the students when we was able to do it.
Right.
But it, we didn't have the resources from the teachers.
The one teacher that was really involved left.
Yes.
So, and then after she left, then nobody else wanted to do anything with it.
And again, I think it's a great idea, but I hate, I mean, we have already as a district on how much money is needed, and they're sitting dormant. And now, I, I think it's great that this, this teacher's running out and she's taking the initiative to get this.
Yeah, the front.
I would hate to think that we're taking in donations, um, and getting grants, um, and it's not gonna be enough to cover it or enough to maintain it, um, which isn't really a good use of resources.
Well, I think for donation and grant money, so I. We're not gonna have any animals in there, you know, or fish or aquatic, so, you know, I think it would be easier to maintain with just plants more so, you know, than.
But I do think that Sir Leeser has a good idea as far as.
Absolutely, absolutely, I agree.
She needs help as far as the maintenance of the building.
I agree. Well, and sometimes when you apply for a grant, they give you a certain amount, which may not be what you apply for.
Yeah.
But they're really detailed if you, if you look at that.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They're really detailed on what she has to do, you know.
Right. Could, could it possibly be incorporated into the Ag Department? Because that would be that co-op program, maintaining a greenery.
That was one of the problems is, we have a greenhouse at the high school, middle school.
I remember.
Have to take resources away from there to travel to other ones. And they was working, from my understanding, I, I, from my, I don't know the whole story, from my understanding, they was working with other teachers, trying to educate them to be able to maintain them themselves.
Right.
And it just took too much resources from everybody. Unless we have a person designated that doesn't have anything to do now, which I doubt we have.
A retired person, they would have loved to come.
What we really need is a local greenhouse for somebody, sponsor it, come look at it on a periodic basis to kind of help us. And at one time, we had a board member that was operating a greenhouse, and he volunteered to do that, but unfortunately, he wasn't allowed, and now I believe he's passed, actually, but we need something like that, I mean, we need help.
I, I would just suggest, again, this is a grant that Mrs. Augustine went after. uh, which was a great thing. And I need to recognize that. To give her the chance to give, Joe Walker the chance to get up and running. It, it may not be that full-scale thing that was here before with all the money that's pumped into it. But it is, it does exist. There's great things we can do with our kids when it comes to life cycle growth of plants. And I don't think it's gonna be something that's gonna be so involved. But again, just give us an opportunity.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, and I'm less.
I don't think there's any disagreements.
I just wanna make sure they have everything they need. And I'd like to also get the one in Claysville.
I didn't realize it was it. Well.
And I think it's a good opportunity if we do, in the future, look at co-op program type things with our ag department. This could be incorporated into that as part of the work they do.
Right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the attached list of books to be removed from the high school, middle school library, library unauthorized disposal of the books as per the terms and conditions of District Policy seven zero six point one, disposal of obsolete outdated equipment.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the revisions of the twenty-five twenty-six McGuffey High School Academic Handbook as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I need a motion to hire Braden Stoy as Assistant Principal at a salary of sixty-five thousand, subject to assignment, McGuffey High School, and per the terms and conditions of the McGuffey School District Compensation Plan for School Administrators and Supervisors, pending receipt of all required clearances, Act one sixty-eight verifications, and medical exams.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Stoy. Mr. Monis, would you like to? Come up to the podium?
Mic's not on.
He's, um, has eleven years in the classroom and seven years here at McGuffey High School. He actually is a special ed teacher in the middle school. And, um, we went, it's not on. It's on. It's on. Um, and, um, we went through a very thorough vetting for the application process. And Brady really, uh, I think brings some skills that we're going to need here to facilitate, um, operation of the high school. Um, Mr. Joyce did a nice job, but his last day is actually tomorrow. So Brady, we started him transitioning into that. So we're excited to have him. He comes, um, with his administrative certificate from Penn West University, his teaching certificate from California, um, University of Pennsylvania, and his, um, uh, another, uh, education degree from Saint Francis University in Loretto, PA. So Brady's been a, a valued member of the middle school staff, uh, for seven years. So we welcome him and his transition to the high school.
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Directors and everyone, uh, for giving me the opportunity to continue service of this district. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Dustin Delgado, custodian and authorized administration to post.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire Jennifer Winters as a custodian, subject to assignment, per the terms and conditions of the current collective bargaining agreement between McGuffey School District and McGuffey Custodial Food Service Transportation, pending receipt of all required clearances, mental exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Mr. President, is there any way we can do four through eleven all at once?
I would be opposed to that.
I'm sorry.
I need a motion to rehire Ms. Joanne Harshman as varsity volleyball coach for the twenty-twenty-five volleyball season at the appropriate step as per the MEA agreement.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain?
Abstain? Want to abstain?
Yes.
Motion carries. I need a motion to rehire Mr. Brian Gillespie as varsity boys soccer coach for the twenty-twenty-five soccer season at the appropriate step as per the MEA agreement. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
To oppose? Anyone abstain? Seven nine.
Seven two.
Will I say seven nine? It's four.
Motion carries, seven to two. Need a motion to rehire Mr. Vince Schmidt as varsity girls soccer coach for the twenty-twenty-five soccer season at the appropriate step as per the MEA agreement.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Ms. Caitlin Group as varsity girls tennis coach for the twenty-twenty-five girls tennis season.
I really wish that we would not speak out over him and let him finish reading all of that. While I get that we can all read that information, the public, especially those at home, cannot. It'd be nice if we could let him finish reading the information without interrupting him. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries. I'm all for if it's a really long one. Cut me off with hard words to pronounce.
I understand that. But, but the public deserves.
I agree with.
I need a motion to rehire Mr. Jackson Knoll as varsity cross-country head coach for the twenty-twenty-five fall season at the appropriate step as per the MEA agreement. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Mr. Nate Perry as varsity football head coach for the twenty-twenty-five fall season at the appropriate step as per the MEA agreement. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Mark Scott as varsity golf coach for the twenty-twenty-five fall season, per the terms and conditions of the agreement between the McGuffey Board of Directors and the McGuffey Education Association. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Ms. Laura Seibert and hire Ms. Mallory Vodopich as assistant volleyball coaches for the twenty-twenty-five late winter sports season, per the terms and conditions of the agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and the McGuffey Education Association. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Congrats, Ms. Seibert. Need a motion to approve the change of status for Nick Whipke from volunteer to paid wrestling coach.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Alex Frye as an emergency day-to-day substitute teacher for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, retroactive to December tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Cable Dale as an emergency day-to-day substitute teacher and parent educator for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all clearances and Act one sixty-eight verification.
Second.
Discussion?
Parents, uh. Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Deja McClay as a substitute parent educator, secretary, and food service employee for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all clearances and Act one sixty-eight verification.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Mr. Michael Futral as a substitute security guard for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, retroactive to November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Jaden Matson and Missy Voitek as volunteers to assist with the musical, pending receipt of all required clearances.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Mr. Justin Wise to attend the Pennsylvania Department of Education Conference on February fifth, sixth, and seventh, twenty-twenty-five in Hershey, PA.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Mrs. Renee Cambruzy and Mr. John Lazier to attend and chaperone members of the McGuffey FFA to the twenty-twenty-five ACES Leadership Conference in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania on February twenty-second and twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, seven one, uh, uh, eight zero one. It is really late. I need a motion to approve Chelsea Kelly and James Stewart as drivers for GGM C for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Rodney Miller as a driver for first student for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to recommend, uh, I need a motion to approve the quote for mass notification services from Bright Arrow Technology for a three-year agreement at the following cost per year. Year one, seven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Year two, six thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Year three, six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, um.
Full as yours.
We have the three that, that were looked at. Um, which one of these three is the closest to what we, or, not the closest to what we already have, but what do these have that we don't currently have? I guess is the best way to ask it.
That was in that chart that Mr. Wilson presented. So if you go back to that chart.
These don't have the blackboard system on it. These are the three that they looked at. I'm, I'm asking.
He did explain that.
Mr. Wilson, do you wanna come up and explain it? Maybe answer Ms. Frye's question?
His big thing is where the data sharing and that it sits in Power School instead of being a separate thing.
So I think to, to your question, um, to most accurately answer it, the, um, messages X are closest to what we currently use.
Okay.
Um, it's no longer going to be used eventually.
Right.
Um, we could probably potentially, uh, maybe link in it by Warrior. I know they, they tried to move us off of it for this current year. That's why we kinda started to look pretty hard at it. Um, but we will not be, if we, if we don't go with the Bright Arrow, we will not be able to do electronic report cards or integrate those kind of reporting, um, functions.
Oh, it's a really separate application. It doesn't sit within.
Correct. It's external for school, yes.
So the report cards don't come from Power School?
It's through.
I guess that's where.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a plugin that sits on there that allows you that functionality for reporting. Um, so the report cards are still generated out of Power School.
Okay.
This is a, a set that then takes the information and puts it into a usable, um, format so that you can do electronic reporting that way. It also allows you to post to the parent port, um, the documents, the, instead of having to, um, the parent can go into the parent portal, access that electronic document that way as well, as opposed to necessarily going into email.
Okay.
It does, it basically toads a server for you to deal with it.
Right. It allows for, I, I understood what you meant when you said it means something you can use electronically. Okay, thank you. I, I apologize if I missed. Thank you.
I do have a question. The year one cost is the combination of the setup fee and the annual fee, correct?
Correct, yeah. Year one would be both of those fees together.
Right. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Andrews and Price for invoice dated December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four in the amount of five thousand five hundred and five dollars as submitted.
Second.
Discussion?
You have several questions.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a bill that's attached to the, uh, motion here? But this bill has appeared the same way for the last nineteen years. And it just wasn't until recently that I'm concerned is, it's kinda general in nature. And when we was interviewing other solicitors, they said that we would know down to the tenth of an hour what they was billing for. Um, my first question is, what is board inquiries cover? For two hundred and four dollars?
Two forty.
Two forty.
Two forty. Mr. Lester, would you like to, yes, Madam Solicitor?
First, first of all, Mr. Leisure, we do provide the district a, a bill down to tenth of an hour. I.
Why?
Our office provides.
Don't we see it? I guess would be my next question. Sorry.
Is there a reason, like in the detailed, um, bill, is there information in there that would not be public information? And that's why we get a summary on the agenda which would be accessed, which could be accessed by the public? Does that make sense?
That's absolutely correct, Mrs. Jackson. When we do like a right to know for our bills, which are right to know, but we have to redact them because we have personnel names, we have student names, we have litigation matters, we have specific details in there that are not, is not public. But our office does provide a bill down to the tenth of an hour.
If, if a board member wanted access to that itemized invoice, then he or she could come to the school and look at that, correct?
Absolutely. And I can tell you, Mr. Leisure, I, I track my time down to the tenth of an hour or so.
Thank you, Amy. My concern is, I have no idea what personnel is. Ta, a tax appeal, I think I know. Right to know, I don't know what that's all about. I, it's a right to know request, I assume. But then there's personnel again. There's two personals. I don't know the difference between personnel two five oh 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 point two and personnel two five oh 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 point one six oh. And then these board inquiries, two five oh 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 point one six two. I'm concerned that we're approving stuff. We don't actually know what we're approving. Um, and I guess my question would be, are you somebody here telling the board that they're not allowed to see that information? Or why can't it be put on like this is?
I think we just went over that. And that's because the itemized bill has information that is not public information. It would have to be redacted. So.
So does it have to be redacted for school board members?
Again, I think we just went over this. And that is that if a board member wants to see the itemized bill, the board member can come to the school and view the itemized bill. But it's not because of the redactable information, anything that you would send electronically to individual board members or would be presented on the public agenda is my understanding. Am I correct?
You're correct. And, Mr. Leisure, if it's helpful, I, I know the numbers. Um, and I can tell you that twenty- You're correct, and Mr. Leisure, if it's helpful, I know the numbers, and I can tell you that twenty-five thousand one sixty, one sixty is a litigation matter, which is why there's a double personnel in there. Because if I use the names that's on the bill, it would disclose personal information that I cannot disclose, which is why there's double personnel there. If you'd like to talk about that in executive session, I'm happy to share with you what that actually is.
Is there any way we can get a copy of the bill redacted, attached to this? I mean, I don't care to see names or anything, I'd just like a better understanding of what they're for.
I can do, I just wanted to explain why there were double personnels on there for you.
And I did not realize in all the years of it on board that we actually got a bill, so I apologize, I didn't know that. It's never been presented since, that I'm aware of. But thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Mark Oberg, Facilities.
President, the past month, forty-eight youth facilities, apparently boys and girls use basketball, use wrestling for it as well, and that's like you.
Thank you. Budget expenditure reports for the month of November and December twenty twenty-four are presented for your review. Cafeteria report for the month of December twenty twenty-four is presented for your review. P-card spending report for the month of December twenty twenty-four is presented for your review. Madam Solicitor, do we have a solicitor's report?
We have no report, Mr. President, but just as one other follow-up, the board-related inquiries was related to advertisement of the policy committee meetings. I believe that the entire board was copied on that.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. Um, Western Area Career and Technology Center report?
Yes, um, there's several attachments there for the, for the public and for you all to see. Those are the weekly updates that they post on social media, they post on their website, I get them as a board representative. Um, very informational, tells you a lot about what's going on. Um, we didn't get an update on this one, but there was, we just had our meeting last night, there was a young lady by the name of Julie Bennett that was recognized. Um, she is a Western Area CTC student. Um, she is from Cannon Mac, and she was one of five scholars chosen to represent, uh, the CTCs in Pennsylvania. And, um, she is up for, they're going to choose twenty different presidential scholars to represent, um, different CTC schools throughout Pennsylvania. And I just wanted to highlight her, very accomplished. They talked a lot about how when she first started, um, quite kept to herself, but throughout her, her educational career at Western Area, she has just grown exponentially and does everything she possibly can to be involved in anything she can. Um, so very, very well modeled student for, for all of, um, the district to see. And, um, I just wanted to share that, everything else is the normal monthly stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Fry. Pennsylvania Scoreboard Association, report, Ms. Schingle.
The only thing that I have is a big long list of things. I'm going to go through them quickly, just in case there's something that you're really interested in. Some of them are webinars and some of them are onsite at Mechanicsburg. February the seventh, you actually can go to a, and this one is something that you have to be there for, but it may be offered as a webinar, and that would be the state budget coverage. And then stronger schools and communities, that one is February the first, that one is onsite. The right to know compliance, February twenty-first at noon, that is a webinar. So if that's something that you're really interested in, now would be the time. And all of these are on their website, you just go on there and register. I don't want to bore you to death by reading them all, but I think it's important to, um, one of them that's coming, um, next week, January thirty-first, it's a live webinar, it's at noon. It's for open records appeals. And we're talked a lot about right to know, so that might be something of interest to you. March twenty-seventh, there will be a summit meeting on school safety. And that one, um, you have to be there. Register for the, um, Teacher Rock, this one is onsite, and it's an education, educators workshop that other educators may be interested in, and it's onsite, and that's February twenty-fifth. Again, there's a big long list, and they focus as continuing education. We as board members are required to do so many, but there's always something. And those little ten-minute brief ones, those, you can get a lot on those. And they're all right there at your fingertips, and it only takes a few minutes of your day. You get, you can get a certificate at the end, it says you've done them. So that's really all that I have. I think there were some updates on like Title IX things, which I know someone sent out and we reviewed it, that's on their website. Uh, plus it's been in the news.
Yeah, if you follow the news, you know.
Yeah, um, and I, that's really all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schingle. And for the record, I never think you're boring. Um, at this moment, we will take, at this time, we will take public comment on non-agenda items. Chief?
Excuse me, it can be agenda or non-agenda, correct? According to our policy?
Yes, yeah, 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 we just need to fix this, yes. Thanks, Ms. Jackson. Agenda or non-agenda items. Sorry, Chief, go ahead. No problem, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, first, I call Casey McFarland, South Franklin Township.
Hi, Casey McFarland, South Franklin. Um, very briefly, I'll touch on, um, you know, though there was still a prayer held while the camera was off before the board meeting started. I do truly want to express my deepest gratitude to Mr. Curran and the board as a whole for, um, removing it from actually being a participating part of the board meeting being held. Um, I, I know that I've been up here a few times talking about it, and it is really heartwarming to know that my words were received. Um, and I hope that everybody in our district is appreciating that space for whatever beliefs that they hold. Um, I also want to applaud, um, everything that was presented today, from the curriculum to the special education programs. The changes being made moving forward sound extremely exciting. I know that when I was in high school, I wish I would have had a class to run my own business or anything like that. I mean, real life skills that these kids will be able to apply to a side gig or start a corporation of their own. So super exciting, and I congratulate all of the hard work that was put into that. Um, last, I just wanted to bring up an idea that I've had, and I'm still new to coming to these meetings. I don't know what all, um, the school boards can do. But thinking about the teachers in this district, I know that we've seen a lot of turnover. That's been something, um, we've seen in a few agendas, whether it's teachers or janitorial or food service, anything of that nature. Um, I'm wondering if there would be a way that we could encourage employees of the district to be a part of these meetings? Or have a place to speak on things that are actually happening in the district? I know that we've probably all had the experience in a workplace, there's a hierarchical structure, right? And so I'm sure that's why a principal comes and talks or something of that nature. But, um, I would think that the people with their feet on the ground doing the work would be the best ones to ask what is needed here. And, you know, we can be a second, third person removed as a parent or somebody in the county in general and say what we've experienced or what we've seen our kids experience. But I, I would like to propose to the board, if it's at all possible, to encourage or create a space that employees could voice their concerns or give suggestions to what could be changed for the better. And that will conclude my time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President called Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
You got quicker on it this time.
She's got the free time.
Ah, this is when I want my seven minutes, not the first time. Okay, so just real quick, Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I'm not going to get into this pit for town over the prayer. I'm not sure exactly what happened. Clearly, Mrs. McFarland was aware that the prayer was going to be removed. Um, clearly, she was the only one. Our prayers will not be silent. We will not be ushered into a hallway to pray. Okay, so I just want to move on. In regard to, um, the school calendar, my point wasn't about school safety or questioning Mr. Wilson and Dr. Oberg. Because I know their decisions are in the best interest and the safety of the students and the faculty. But with that said, when you're only building two snow days into a schedule when you live in Pennsylvania and you have no idea what the weather is going to be? Then you're going to be using FID dates or remote learning for every other day that there's either inclement weather, an issue with the buildings, whatever. So do we want our kids in class? Because if we do, we need to not lean on these remote learning days, and we need to build a schedule that allows for the students to be in the doors. As I stated, y'all know wifi is an issue, and many students, including my eldest grandson, doesn't do well teaching himself with remote learning. Okay, one other thing. Next kind of letter is sent out to the district parents that has been borrowed from another district. Can we make sure our name is on it and not the district that we borrowed it from? Uh, and lastly, I want to say this, and I'm going to repeat this to you guys throughout this year. I fully admit I don't know the ins and outs of all the unions within the school districts and who's in which ones. But I do know and would like to remind the taxpayers is that since the majority of the board voted to modify the union contract for parent educators prior to their contract coming up for negotiation? We, the taxpayers, have paid up to fifty employees eight hours each of hourly pay to sit home during two-hour delays. And that's just for the month of January, which isn't even over yet. We still have a lot of winter to go, and I will continue to track this, and we'll be asking Mrs. Bedilian for a grand total when we start asking for a tax increase. I think the taxpayers have a right to know the financial cost of such a decision when you ask for a tax, the tax increase that is coming. I'm sure the other unions within the district are paying attention to this giveaway in preparation for their contract renewal. And who can blame them once you offset the precedent? You didn't heed the advice of the solicitor to table it, and you didn't even allow Mrs. Bedilian a voice in the decision. And I'm really hoping that you never let that happen again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President called Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township.
Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township, I'm going to, one of the things I have to say, y'all just need to, um, just understand who I am, and I still love you even though you say, say the things you say. Anyway, um, I wanted to start off with saying something about Mr. DeSilvio. Um, I've never met him, but my son had him this year, and he made a huge impact on my boy. Even though, or even to let me, even enough to let me know on December twentieth that that was Mr. DeSilvio's last day. Um, and my son was sad. You, you were my son's favorite teacher, even though he only had you for half of the year out of the thirteen years of schooling here at McGuffey. So I wanted to say thank you, Mr. DeSilvio, for his time here at McGuffey and his dedication to the students. I wish you the best on your new adventure teaching at home. In his PJs. To turn to another topic, I just wanted to point out my confusion on the two-hour delays involving VOTAC students. Why are they going to VOTAC for thirty-five minutes? Um, they, they arrive, I guess, at the school at ten fifty, and then they are there until approximately eleven twenty-five. That is the time that they are there on two-hour delays, and I'm just, it's just, it's just silly. Thirty-five minutes, they drive thirty, twenty-five that way and twenty-five back, and they're only there for thirty-five minutes, it doesn't make any sense. Um, wanted to bring up that my son will be applying for a co-op position. What Mr. Bonus was speaking on, the availability for these children to be able to work in the morning. Um, I think it's awesome, and my son is in the VOTAC networking program, and he looks forward to the opportunity to work in the morning and expand his abilities. I think it's a great opportunity for the seniors. I thank those that make this happen. Um, I wanted to point out something that drives me absolutely nuts, and it makes everyone, and that says it, sound a little uneducated. I understand that none of us are perfect, though through my years of English class, I really learned a lot from my teachers. And to this day, I find myself correcting my children a lot, which they hate. Um, it's just, it's just what I've learned from school and how I've learned to speak crack, and I'm trying to instill that in my children. Um, to be blunt, it is instructional day, not flexible, flexible instructional day, day. It is not FID day. I'll sound ridiculous saying it like you do. You're an education facility, saying it over and over like this. I think we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard when it comes to teaching, especially when we are examples to these children. Just my peace of mind. Um, one thing, one last thing I wanted to ask the community to express prayers to the Scott family as my castaway just after Christmas. Mike was a McGuffey graduate, fireman, a veteran, a father, a husband, a son, a cousin. I extended family needs all the loving we can give. Thank you, thank you for your time and dedication to this district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, last is Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough.
Hi, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough. I, again, coming here with my positivity, my shout-outs. I first wanted to thank, uh, Dr. Oberg, Mike Wilson. Um, I know you guys work really hard on figuring out what's going to be a FID, what's going to be a two-hour delay, all that fun stuff. I just wanted to say thank you, um, for the early notifications that we've been giving or getting. Um, you'd think that my kids hit the lottery every time the phone rings, and when they find out it's going to be a FID the next day. It's very exciting stuff with the Teal household. Um, the second one I wanted to give a shout-out to, uh, to Dr. Welk and his staff. Uh, they do several assemblies, I don't know if you've heard of, about them throughout the school year. Uh, the, uh, first one I think they do is the middle school, uh, football game where the entire school gets to come out and watch a game. I think that's wonderful to support our team. Um, they have a kickball assembly where the kids all get to, uh, I think they create teams, uh, they get to cheer on their teams, they can buy, uh, food at the, um, confession stand. And I believe they're also going to have, um, a wrestling assembly. I think it got rescheduled, postponed. Um, another thing that I wanted to bring your attention to, I don't know if you've heard of our Olympics that we hold here at McGuffey School District? Um, is, uh, when our life skill students get together with other life skill students from other, uh, local schools, they assemble here. We hold little games throughout the day, we have lunch, and at the end, they have kind of a little, a dance party. Um, I've been lucky enough to volunteer for the last several years since I started. Uh, it's a wonderful day, if you have the opportunity, I encourage you to stop by. Uh, it's a really fun day, I mean, you're, you won't leave, you won't stop smiling all day, it's, it's wonderful. Um, wanted to give a shout-out to Mrs. Tildes who put that together for us here. Uh, and then my last shout-out is to Mrs. Bedilian. I wanted to thank you for your work on the budget and the review, and I think that's very helpful, um, the way you break it down. It, I don't know, for me, it's much more easy to understand, and it's one of those pull to see it up. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes public comment this time. I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before we adjourn, if I may, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Um, my first. My first one is, I would ask again that we add to our current agenda, I know we talked about adding categories to it in the past, and we can come to a determination of adding, you know, something along the lines of unfinished business. I would ask again that we have that added, as well as an opportunity for board comments, even if it's at the very end of the meeting, it doesn't mean that the board is going to have comments to make, but for such a time as this, it would be appreciated. Second, I would like to ask that we move our Student of the Month and our High School Student Council to the beginning of our committee meetings, for such a time as tonight, when committee runs late, and they're sitting here, you know, waiting to be presented and present to us, et cetera. My last comment is, it took a consensus to have a prayer in this district before our school board meeting, and there was no consensus taken for this evening's decision. I think it is a disrespect to the entire board, what happened this evening, and those concerns are going ignored. So, I would appreciate that those kinds of decisions, those blanket decisions, don't be made. You are one person, you may be the president, but that was out of your, your range of authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye.
Mommy, can I ask you a question? When you talk about old business and items that we can discuss, are you meaning in committee meeting, or are you meaning in district?
On our agenda. So on our agenda, we have categories, you know, solicitors report, superintendent recommendations, things like that, those are all those categories. I would like to see one, not, not for old business, but unfinished business. It's something, like the book fair, it's something to discuss before, waiting for an update, haven't gotten one, so that it can be there, so that it reminds everybody, we asked about this, there's no updates on it, whatever the, whatever it might be. And then, of course, for board comments at the end.
When we had discussed it before, we had kind of agreed with the board to put it on the committee agenda, rather than the regular meeting agenda, as unresolved business.
On the committee.
And that's what we, and when, to my knowledge, we've not put it there yet, but that's where we had agreed to put it, when we discussed it before.
I suppose I'd like to revisit it then, because we don't see the committee agenda until we get here. I would like to see it on our actual agenda, so that when we get here-
But we also discussed with, at the same time, that the committee agenda could go out to the board prior to the night of the meeting.
And it was, and then it was stopped.
I'm just reminding the board-
I remember, but that's why I'm asking it to be on here, because we have asked for those things, and they fall through. Well, I thought of that, but I don't, I'm still trying to find a policy, and I don't know about anybody else that's on the committee, or anybody else, but I haven't found a policy specific to creating an agenda, so I don't know-
The policy, the, the policy that deals with the agenda is, um, it's on, it says, what it says is that the, we just went over it, actually, because I sent notes, that the agenda is created by-
Right.
-these people, with input from these people. And I think it would be up to them than to, based on board input, to make that decision.
But it's not creating this agenda format, I guess you could say?
Board consensus.
Board consensus.
Because this is board governance, this is internal board governance, it does not need to be something that-
It's not tied to money.
It's not, it's not even a technical public decision, so if you, if there's a, if there's a consensus of the board that wants to add unresolved business, and again, I remember this discussion as well, I didn't want it to be unfinished business, because that's technical under Robert's rules, if things have been tabled, to pull them off the table, so that you know what's been taken off the table. So unresolved business, if you want to add that, or you want to add board comments, you certainly can. I know, I know sometimes some districts defer to the superintendent to organize, I mean, I, every, every board meeting I go to, the agenda's organized differently, so it's how you would like to govern it.
Right. I motion to add to our agenda, our public agenda, a category for either unresolved or unfinished business.
I wouldn't name it unfinished, you just gave a reason why legally we shouldn't use the term unfinished.
Unresolved business is what I recommend, because unfinished business is things that have been officially tabled by the board.
Okay, unresolved.
No, this is a board consensus, this doesn't, this isn't even a motion, you could just go around and everyone-
Okay. So, I would be in favor of it.
Are you adding the board comments as well?
I think they should be separate.
Separate.
So we're gonna do them separate?
I think they should be separate items.
Okay, that's fine with me if they're separate items. So, I would support having a new category for unresolved business on the agenda.
You're making a motion for that?
No, she said, no, 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 no motion, need agenda. So then you're just gonna ask for consensus from the board?
Seems like we did this recently, on another subject, the very same thing.
So, round the room, support or unsupport?
For both or for one?
For just the, just the unresolved.
Unresolved.
For this one.
I'll just start with, with Ms. Frye, Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. Shingle?
Yeah, that's fine.
Ms. Robarnik?
When we're not put together, we'll finish with it. Can I see it? Yes.
Yes.
No.
And I'm Mrs. Jackson, not Ms. Shingle anymore.
What did I say, Ms. Shingle?
I've been Ms. Shingle for 25 years.
It's with my adding earlier, I can't add, and-
Yes, I would make a motion to add board comments. Through the board president, yeah, board president.
And you want to do the board agenda, correct, or the board comments?
Board comments.
Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. Shingle?
Yeah.
Ms. Robarnik?
Yes.
Ms. Laser?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Frye?
So, an example is this evening.
You wanted to make a comment.
I wanted to make a comment before we adjourned. It gives the board president an opportunity to remember to pause any board comments, if there isn't any, finally adjourn. If, if there are, it gives us an opportunity, not anything on the agenda, and maybe it's something we talked about this evening, maybe it's just, hey, I want to update you on something, or maybe it, you did something wrong I don't appreciate.
So it's, it's on either agenda or non-agenda, it can be anything.
It's just for the board, it's just board comments.
Well, it can't be anything, because there are certain topics that are executive session topics only, so-
Well, I'll add to that, yes.
Well, I understand that, but the truth of the matter is, we've had board members who have attempted to bring up executive session topics at a meeting.
It is true.
And just for clarity, board comments aren't official actions of the board, it's just, you know, I wanna, I wanna wish somebody a happy birthday.
Yes.
It's something like that, so there would be no official action taken on anything that the board members would say, anything that you would say that would need official action would have to wait till the next meeting.
Correct.
It's really always, it always, it's on there, like she just said, I want to make a comment, I've had times I've said, I want to make a comment. All she's asking is that there's something on there that reminds us, do you, do any board member want to make a comment?
Right.
Mr. Banana?
Uh, sure.
Mr. Thomas?
Ms. Jackson?
Mrs. Jackson. Thank you.
You're welcome. Right ahead, go ahead.
I would like to get a consensus too, to change that. The public participation, I'd like to change the wording, instead of public comment on agenda or non-agenda items, let's just make it a little easier, public comment on community concerns. And that takes the question about if it's agenda item, if it's non-agenda item.
That, I believe, does fall under the policy that we were just reviewing.
And the policy would just have to be updated with that, correct, verbiage? Yeah.
You could, yes, you can call a public comment if you want, and just drop everything District concerns, yeah, yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
I'm okay with that. It can be on anything.
Right. So do we need a? Ms. Frye?
Yes.
To change it to public comment on district concerns.
Yeah, that's fine.
On, just on the last one, this is Robarnik?
The one at the end.
One at the end, yep. Mr. Laser?
Yes.
Mr. Kern, yes. Mr. Banana, Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Mrs. Jackson?
I'm sorry, what are we calling it again?
Public comment on district concerns.
But I do think it should relate to the district.
Well, that's why Mr. Laser said district concerns.
Which I, I get, um, I don't have a problem with that, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't really change the verbiage of the, of the agenda item, it just kinda-
It doesn't restrict.
Yeah, and it, the confusion.
Yeah. The only thing I will say is, that this board has an outstanding vote, actually, on the amount of time, and agenda items get seven minutes, and non-agenda items get five, so you're gonna be backed to, and I suggested this before, and we all know what my stance was, but you're gonna be backed to, how are you differentiating that? Because there will be members of our community who are like, I want seven minutes, because it's an agenda item, not just the district, I mean, they're all district concerns, so-
Well, they would have their opportunity for the agenda item beforehand with a seven minute.
So you're saying they would not be allowed to talk about agenda items during the public comment on district concerns?
No, they could.
Then they could get seven minutes.
Well, they will the first time.
No.
They don't get seven minutes now for when they talk about agenda.
Yes, they do.
At the last one, they get five minutes at the last one.
If it's an agenda item, they get seven.
They've never been given seven minutes?
Yes.
No, they haven't.
We've gone backwards.
There has never been a seven minutes for that last one.
If it's an agenda item, they have been.
Wait, it may be what we agree to, but the clock usually comes up five.
It's five minutes, they're given five minutes.
I said this.
Can I maybe clear this up very easily? Can I maybe clear this up very easily? There, there's two sides of public comment, there's public comment before the meeting, and there's public comment after the meeting. What we name them i- is board consensus, which is what we just talked about. The time period that is set is actually in the policy of '06, so the, the policies committee will come back to the board with a recommendation on the other issue under '06. That fair to everyone?
All right, I need a motion to adjourn the school board meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries, board meeting is closed at 9:23 PM.